Good evening. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs will not come to order. Notice of this hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets by electronic format on July 28, 2014 with a second notice on August 2. Notice the hearing also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. We had three bills and one confirmation on the agenda. With everybody's assistance, I would like to ask that we'll call the bills out of order. The Director has to be at a meeting immediately. So we'll start with Bill 386, An Act to Clarify Certain Functions of the Administrative Law Judge Under the Civil Service Commission by Amending Subsection C of Title IV GCA 4405. Senator La Marina, if you're recognized.
Good evening, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senators Ada and Senators McCready. My name is Tony La Marina. I want to thank you for providing me this opportunity to provide testimony with regard to Bill 386, An Act to Clarify Certain Functions of the Administrative Law Judge Under the Civil Service Commission by Amending Subsection C of Title IV GCA, Subsection 4405. The Civil Service Commission supports Bill 386 as introduced. The legislation further clarifies the functions of the A O J and provides the authority to the Civil Service Commission to grant certain duties and responsibilities necessary to expedite the adjudatory process. The legislation also addresses that all decisions by the A O J shall be reviewed and ratified by the C S E commissioners and the ability for them to accept, reject, or modify in whole or in part. Currently, the C S E is scheduling cases into August of 2016. This legislation will assist to alleviate the backlog, providing quicker resolution to all parties. We would like to thank the Vice Speaker for introducing Bill 386, and we ask all Senators to support this legislation. Sudus Masih.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summerfleck, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senators?
Is that done?
Yes, it is. I've had a long day. I'll cooed a little bit louder, I guess. First, what I'd like to make is I'd like to say from the onset that I believe, having appeared before the Civil Service Commission, that we are fortunate to have dedicated individuals in our community who are giving up so much of their time. Oftentimes, we will have hearings in front of them three nights during a week. They will add extra days on so that matters can be resolved. But the wave is too great, and the issues at the port have presented to us how great that wave can be where the Commission can literally be swamped. And at this time, as the Director has put forward, the hearings are now being scheduled in August of 2016. This is not good for anyone. For the employees that have been terminated or subject to disciplinary action, to have that hanging out and not being resolved for in excess of over two years, it's negative for us all. It's negative for the agency because if they lose, they'll have to pay back wages for an employee who hasn't worked for the agency for the time that they've been waiting. For the employee, it becomes a matter of survival. How much, how long can I survive before I'm no longer able to wait any longer and have to take another job? Employers don't want to hire someone who's in the limbo zone. Well, if you get your job back, then you're not going to work here. No, I'm not going to work here. So it puts everyone in a bad situation. The bill as presented provides that the powers of the Commissioner remain 100% intact. They are the ones that make the final decision on any ruling, on any thought process, on any motion, on any merit hearing, and they are the final say. It provides them an ability to review the work product of someone else. Oftentimes, commissioners review transcripts of hearings that are already in place to ensure that they agree with what's been found, and that, I'm sure, would continue, knowing the diligence that the commissioners currently carry out in their functions. I would make a suggestion, perhaps, and I'm not sure whether this is something a lawyer should be making, but I don't know whether we need to have a Guam licensed attorney. I know a number of individuals in our community that are equally qualified to hear these sort of issues, but I would strongly support this bill just to eliminate the backlog that's developed, as well as to provide a system so that the functions of the Commission can move forward in an expedited fashion. I support the bill, and I thank you Senators for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Summerfleck. I should recognize that I've been joined by Senators Ada, Senator Sinicolas, Senator McCready, and Senator Uggan. Thank you very much, colleagues, for joining us this afternoon. Would anybody else like to submit or speak on Bill 386? Do you have any questions?
I guess, to Attorney Summerfleck, you focused on that one issue about the A O J must be a Guam licensed attorney, and I was kind of surprised that you don't think that it should be a Guam, I mean, that it has to be a Guam licensed attorney. In fact, on top of that, I've known of several cases where the guy wasn't even living on Guam. He was licensed on Guam to practice on Guam, lived in Michigan, and then he was earning enough, I guess, to be able to fly out here, do the work, and then fly back again. So I'm just wondering, if then you don't think that they necessarily need to be Guam licensed, does that also go to say that they probably don't even need to be Guam-based?
I would differ in that thought process. I think the difference between being Guam licensed and being a resident of Guam and knowing the Guam community and knowing the aspects of the Guam community is key. I think understanding how our government functions and how our government works, my vision is that this would not be 20 individuals, but this would be one or two individuals. And by saying it doesn't necessarily need to be an attorney, I put forward there are a number of people I have encountered who aren't attorneys, aren't licensed to practice, but have a substantial amount of knowledge about how our government of Guam personnel rules work, how our government of Guam merit system works, that isn't attorney-related. Clearly, there are certain aspects where an attorney's position and attorney's background are useful, but I don't, I think the question should be for the Commission to determine who they think is the best qualified for the position, not based upon whether they hold the certificate or not.
And should we, I mean, so then if the amendment was to be made to strike the requirement that it must be an attorney, but that it could be anybody who's qualified to do the work, how do we, I mean, so what sort of parameters would we, you know, put in?
Well, I would put in that that would be the duty of the Director and the Commission to determine who they consider the most appropriate individual. For example, I'm aware of an individual here on Guam who has extensive labor background. He also has a law degree, but he's not admitted to practice here on Guam. You know, if that individual were to come forward and say, hey, I would like to do this, or, for example, one of the former Directors of the Commission who has worked with the Commission for an extended number of years, those individuals may be considered equally qualified based upon their experience in the labor and the merit system and the government of Guam personnel procedures, to be equally qualified, if not more qualified, than perhaps someone like myself. I just, I just look at it as I would not foreclose the opportunity, but I believe you also make a very good point, that we want someone who lives here on Guam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question in regards to how the process, if, in fact, the Commission is given an opportunity for an administrative law judge to review a number of cases. The way this reads is that all the decisions will further, will be forwarded to the Commission for further review and ratification, rather than giving, I've seen other structures where the decision will be made, but then the Commission has every right within a certain timeline to be able to either reject or disregard that particular decision. You understand where I'm coming from?
I understand.
Rather than allowing, it's like having someone review everything, all the documentations and whatnot, render a suggestion, not necessarily a decision. So in this case, how would the Commission feel if, in fact, the legislation with the concurrence of the Chair would be the administrative law judge would render decisions which the Commission can always overturn? So that we still have the checks and balances, but it doesn't have to go through that additional step of further review, because, in other words, it's not a decision, it's a recommendation to the Commission.
If I might, and then I'll hand the mic over real quick. I think that would, in part, defeat our Civil Service Commission. I think, defeat our Civil Service Commission. I think that the Commission's ability to review the decision and to make the final decision is what makes me support this bill. That if the decisions were to be made by a third party outside of the Commission, and then the Commission could in some way overturn that decision, it almost puts them in a position where they are in appellate division rather than the actual finder of facts.
I was under the impression that there would be only limited cases that the Commission and the Executive Director would be able to forward to the administrative law judge. Now, if that's not the case, then I understand your concern, but if, let's say, the rules and regs define the parameters of only such cases that does not deal with termination, does not deal with other serious matters, as it has tremendous implications on the employees, then that would be where the rules and regs would come in. But I understand your concern, and I appreciate your perspective, because certainly, looking at this and trying to expand the options that are available to the Commission, I hear what you're saying, but in the same token, that's where the Commission can come in and define and narrow the focus in terms of where the administrative law judge can conduct business and render decisions. But I'll leave it to the Chairman, I think, and the sponsor of the legislation. I think that that's just a question that I wanted to pose, understanding other structures that exist in the government of Guam.
Senator, the way we were looking at the structure was, the A O J, let's say, for example, the commissioners empower the A O J to handle grievances, whistleblowers, suspensions, and demotions. So the parties, the management and the employee, would then present their cases to the A O J. The A O J will hear their case, come up with a decision and judgment, and then present it to the full Commission. And these are my findings, these are my rulings, and then the Commission will review those findings, and then either approve, reject, or modify. So, and the reason we do that is because, again, as Attorney Summerfleck said, it kind of diminishes the whole purpose of the Commission when you allow one individual now to more or less circumvent the seven commissioners. The other thing, too, is it allows, you know, we have commissioners, our seven commissioners, many of them, we have one commissioner who's been there since he was first appointed by then-Governor Joe Ada. So, you know, we've got a lot of experience in the Commission, so you've got historical knowledge that these individuals, for example, the A O J may uphold management's termination, whereas the Commission would probably feel that, yes, adverse action was proper, but maybe not termination, maybe a 30-day suspension since the employee, in the last, let's say, 20 years of his employment, had no progressive discipline. So therefore, the commissioners may say, well, you know, based on our historical knowledge and on how we dealt with cases in the past, maybe we should, we agree with the adverse action being imposed, but maybe not termination, but a suspension, so.
Don't misinterpret my questioning, because I think that ultimately, the Civil Service Commissioners should continue to maintain the authority that it presently has. What I'm saying is that here is an administrative law judge, to me, it's almost like a glorified, I better, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I better hold back of my comment, but it's like, it's like an individual that you assign to review everything, come up with your recommendations, and it still goes before the Commission for further review slash ratification. So in other words, I mean, you can give me this responsibility, I'll take a look at all the documents, all the information, hear all the comments from the public, and then say, this is my decision. Now, commissioners, you still have to review it by law, you still have to ratify my decision. So it's more or less, I'm not making necessarily a decision, but a suggestion to the Commission. I only brought that up because it may expedite some of the considerations in terms of not having that additional layer, but still having that authority to remain with the commissioners so that, in fact, ultimately, you can, like you said, if you think that the penalty is too excessive, that the commissioners would always retain that. And I will not take that away from the commissioners in any way, shape, or form, but I think I shared more or less my concern with regards to how the language is proffered, and I'll yield to the sponsor like you said.
And it would expedite our calendar much quicker. For example, our commissioners, just to give you, and I brought calendars for all of you, but in the next, we just finished scheduling, for the next six weeks, we're going to be meeting three times a week, because our caseload is so backlog. And so normally, we're only scheduled to meet Tuesdays and Thursdays, but for the next six weeks, we're going to be meeting Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays. So with the A O J, and on top of that, we not only have, for example, hearing in the merits, we may stack a grievance or a whistleblower. So this is where, for example, the A O J, from eight to five, can actually hear those whistleblowers or the grievances or motion hearings, and then just leave, for example, the hearing in the merits specifically for the commissioners. But yeah, it would alleviate our calendar tremendously.
I want to acknowledge that Senator Ada has joined us. Senator La Marina, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I certainly fully support this concept. In fact, the concept of the A O J is currently being, has been used for years over the Public Utilities Commission.
And O P A, too.
And O P A. And so basically, what comes out from the A O J's desk is a proposed order, and ultimately, though, it's the commissioners that decide whether they're convinced of what they've been presented with or not.
Mr. Vanderveldt, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening. May I ask? Thank you. Good evening. May I ask to disseminate a proposal?
Please.
Okay. I've reviewed Public Law 386-32 COR, and relative to paragraphs A and B, I didn't see anything that I thought might be in need of modification, but as to paragraph C, I thought there were some things that I would suggest possibly result in amendment, and so I'm providing you with a subsection C that I would suggest be included. It addresses in some parts what Senator Uggan raised, which is, the Commission, the way that I phrase it is, the Commission may, upon a vote of a majority of its members, because it's not clear what would be the requirement for the decision of whether or not to employ, because there's some decisions that have to have, a majority, some that have to have under the rule of four. So I thought it would be best just to be clear. A majority of its members employ a person admitted to the practice of law, and maybe in this issue, Mr. Summerfleck and I may disagree, but I think that the reason that it would be important is that there are a number of cases that pertain to decisions of the Civil Service Commission that have been rendered by the Guam Supreme Court and by the Superior Court of Guam, and an attorney licensed to practice law in Guam would be familiar with the manner by which to conduct that research, and I do not believe others would have that same experience and authority. And it says, who may be employed either part-time, full-time, or on a case-by-case basis, so that's consistent with the language of the bill, as an administrative law judge to assist the Commission in its duties, other than its legal counsel, because I think the way that it reads it could be construed also to be the legal counsel, to hear and determine matters as it may assign to the A O J, including but not limited to motions of any nature and ultimate hearing of evidence on the merits, and making a recommendation of the decision therein, which decision shall be subject to review of the Commission on the request of any party or any commissioner within 10 days after the filing with the Commission of any decision by the A O J. Now, this shows the deference and respect to the Commission and its members, that any one of them can ask that the matter be considered by them, and it would be considered by them, or any of the parties. But if nobody asks for consideration of the decision, then the decision would become final. It wouldn't be subject to even court review, because if there's been no request for it to be reconsidered by the Commission, then why allow for the continuation of the judicial process to be invoked? It would just seem to me to make sense that everyone has accepted it as a final decision, and it becomes final. That language isn't in the bill, but I think that the 10 calendar days, with the last day having to be a day that the Commission is open for its regular workday, is appropriate language to be added in. The Commission, historically, the law does not provide a period of time within which for decisions of the Commission to be brought on judicial review to the Superior Court of Guam. That was a matter which was a product of case law decision by then-Superior Court Judge Weeks, who employed the Code of Civil Procedure, Section 187, as a basis to take what was the 30-day period of time for taking an appeal, and apply it to the right to appeal that was provided in Title IV, Chapter IV, of decisions of the Civil Service Commission for judicial review. So keeping with that notion in mind, I'm sorry, you're going to have to, let me whip my eyeglasses out, I'm getting a little older. If no request is made, the decision shall stand without review by any entity thereafter, including Superior Court of Guam, and any rule requiring the vote of the Commission shall not apply. Under IV GCA, Section 4402, decisions on adverse actions require a vote of a rule of, under the rule of four, of four commissioners, either one way or the other, in order for there to be a decision. But if the decision is ultimately going to be made by the A O J, then of course, you would not want that to have to, and it isn't requested to be reviewed, you wouldn't want that rule of the statutes to apply, and you wouldn't want there to be any lack of clarity that you didn't intend that rule to apply. Then I suggest, if a review is requested, the Commission shall determine whether to approve such decision or to enter a decision of its own in accordance with the laws, rules, and procedures applicable to the decisions of the Commission. So I don't think it's necessary to redundantly state what those are, because they already are, at this point, I think, fairly well-known. Any A O J employed by the Commission to assist it in its duties shall be obliged to follow the rules and procedures of the Commission, as may exist at the time and may implement or adopt any other procedure not provided for by those rules or procedure, which is convenient to the resolution of the matter after giving due notice of the procedure for a period of not less than 30 days prior to the implementation of such procedure to the parties appearing before, the A O J and the Commission. Then I say, the rule of four contained in IV GCA, Guam Code annotated, Section 4402, shall not apply to the decisions of the A O J unless reviewed by the Commission is I think that it helps to, provides for some clarity, and then it also provides for, just like Civil Code, Section 187, gave Superior Court Judges the ability to adopt their own procedures that they determine would be appropriate and necessary, this extends that to the A O J, because I don't think that the present rules of the Civil Service Commission fully deal with all of the possible circumstances that arise before them. The other thing that I think is important, the reason that I suggest this modification is that ultimately, the powers of the Civil Service Commission to modify or to alter the punishment, that's already existing in the Code. So I don't think that it's necessary to repeat that, because this is, we made that order, but it extends that authority also to the A O J if he is making a decision. So he possesses all powers that the Commission has relative to the decision that he proposes, but it is, as Senator Uggan suggested, it's a proposal which becomes final by the fact that nobody disputes it, or that no commissioner asks for it to be reviewed. And since part of the purpose of this is to create efficiency, I think that this helps to accomplish that efficiency. I have noted that over the last, maybe six to seven years, the Civil Service Commission has been so burdened with cases that, at times, it's scheduling things a year, year and a half, now I think it's approaching two years out. It simply accelerates the liability for back pay to the government of Guam and not having received any, anything in return for having done so. It is clear to me that the present circumstances are not efficient. And I think maybe even that it might be a consideration of a period of time that you might want to put into subsection C, a mandatory requirement, that unless they're able to schedule hearings within six months, it's mandatory for them to assign cases out to A O Js. Because this is really not just a matter of what makes the commissioners happy. This is about preserving the financial resources of the taxpayers. It's also about assuring that those people who are substantially affected by employment decisions have fairness within a reasonable time to have their cases determined. If you're unemployed from your job for a year or two years, waiting to get back to your job, it just, I think if you consider the burden that a person would have to endure under those circumstances, you would agree, it simply is completely unjust. And these matters really need to be determined in a much quicker and more efficient manner. So I was trying to basically stay within, in my suggestion, what I thought was the intent of the present subsection C, but in my humble opinion, the only way in which you will return justice to the taxpayers and to those employees of the government of Guam who are affected by matters which go before the Commission, is to assure that unless the matters can be resolved within six months, they must employ an A O J in order to streamline and assure efficiency. Otherwise, there's no absolute guideline. In some cases, they might have a curiosity that they want to hear and resolve the case, and it could end up with the case being extended out for a year, two years. That's not right. It's not fair. No employee can survive during that period of time waiting to get their job back. Though I know that some people have been in office and then are out for a couple of years and come back, it's, I think, a little bit different for the average line employee of the government of Guam. And so to do fairness to everyone involved, I suggest that the bill be modified in that way. Thank you.
I will allow the panel members to ask the questions of Mr. Vanderveldt, but I will instruct or allow the two of you to submit written comments on this amendment by Mr. Vanderveldt, because I don't want the three of you to be discussing it while we're sitting here watching.
We argue only our.
I know, that's what I mean, that's what I'm afraid of. So I will allow the panel members to ask questions, but it won't be a discussion, uh, or debate between the three of you.
We may name three names.
Just, just a quick question.
In two years.
Just a quick question, Mr. Vanderbilt.
Yes, sir.
On your, uh, towards the middle of your test, uh, of your proposed amendment here, that if no request for review is made, the decision shall stand without review by any entity thereafter, including the Superior Court of Guam. Are you saying here that whatever the decision is made at the Civil Service Commission, that's it, there's no appealing to the Superior Court?
No, whatever decision the ALJ will recommend.
Right.
If, if, if neither party to the, uh, proceeding.
Right.
Which is the government of Guam, uh, employer, or the employee, or as any single commissioner shall ask for review by the commission.
Understand.
Then it's an implied acceptance of that decision and there shouldn't be an opportunity to continue the litigation, uh, elsewise because it, it's inefficient and, uh, it just seems to me that, that everyone, if everyone has accepted it, then it should become final. Uh, as opposed to if somebody is dissatisfied with the decision, then they would, anyone would have the right to request to be, uh, the ALJ's decision to be, uh, considered by the commission and then the standard, uh, procedures of the, of the commission, uh, would apply. Now, they may determine to accept the factual, uh, determinations by the ALJ, or they may decide to hear the case de novo and schedule it for a hearing. I, 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 that, that I think was the intent of the present subsection C as it's written, and I intended not to alter that, but it just seemed to me to make it very clear that if there was no request, then it should become the, the complete and final decision. So, but, a, a, and again, I, I indicated, any singular commissioner felt that it was worth their, their consideration, then it would be subject to review. Now, you might say, well, you think that one isn't enough, it should be two or three, a vote of two or three for a review of the commissioners. Again, I leave that to your ultimate wisdom to, to make that determination. I just was reading the bill, trying to streamline it because I thought that, you know, some of the language, particularly at the beginning, uh, was a little redundant at times, but I just wanted, and no offense, I just wanted to make, you know, this a little more clear, plus provide for a time deadline for, for there to be a reconsideration with, from the ALJ to the commission, and then, uh, more, more fully, uh, state what the, the circumstances of adopting procedures that are not provided for, uh, would be allowed. But the thirty days notice is really to make sure that everyone has fairness. Uh, I think anyone would agree that, that if you were to implement a decision, uh, that you can apply a certain procedure and you don't give sufficient advance notice, then the people who are appearing before you can't use that efficiently for their, uh, purposes and everyone should have that fairness, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This whole ALJ thing, it kinda concerns me, um, and it does so because it kinda looks to me like the Civil Service Commission will be able to pretty much assign its, its primary responsibility to, uh, an attorney that they go out and they hire. And it concerns me in two areas. The first is that, you know, if an employee, um, has an issue that they're bringing before the Civil Service Commission and some ALJ is handling it, and that ALJ has political affiliations with the very, uh, employer that's, um, causing distress to the employee, uh, wouldn't that cause, uh, wouldn't there be a likelihood that the ALJ would have, uh, wouldn't the, the possibility be there that the ALJ, ALJ may render a decision that would be more favorable to the employer than to the employee?
Can I, can I take this first? Cause there, there's an ethical rule that, that applies to the rest of law. There's an ethical rule under the, the rules of ethics, model rules of professional conduct that apply to the conduct of attorneys acting as an impartial or a neutral that would require certain disclosures, uh, by the individual who was employed, such that if they, there was some, uh, untoward, uh, relationship between that person and the agency, he would have a duty to disclose it. Um, and so I, I don't think that that necessarily arises. I, I do know that politics long plays into much of what occurs, uh, in our community, uh, and sometimes unfortunately so, but, uh, I think that the model rules of professional conduct, uh, are sufficient, uh, in this regard to, to prevent against that. And I would point out that, uh, in the federal merit systems protection, uh, board system, it is very similar to what is being suggested here, which is cases are first heard by an ALJ who makes a decision and that decision is subject to review at the request of either party or by the merit systems protection board itself. So it seems to me that we're not, we're not necessarily, uh, uh, creating a whole new concept that's never been employed elsewhere. It is, it is a, uh, a model that is consistent with other places, uh, and so I think it's, I, I think it resolves, uh, for the most part, those concerns, but I appreciate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still concerned because, I mean, we're, we're a small community, you know, and, and the other concern that I have with that is, uh, it kinda creates an environment where the Civil Service Commission can say, hey, you know what, we're just gonna go with that because the ALJ kinda said that that's what their, their suggestion is, versus the Civil Service Commission having to own up and take full responsibility for the decision, having rendered that decision based on the findings of fact entirely. There's no, there's no third party that's kind of tilting that decision one way or another by hav- having a preliminary finding. And so I'm just kinda concerned because, you know, I mean, for example, what if the ALJ, uh, has, and, and a lot of attorneys on Guam have contracts of the government, you know, and what if the appointed ALJ has a contract of the government? I mean, would that, would that be grounds to automatically disqualify the ALJ, ALJ from consideration, um, for, for hire from, by, by the Civil Service Commission? Maybe no attorneys of any current government of Guam contracts shall service ALJs? Would that be a proper amendment probably to stick in here? I mean, I'm just, I, you, you see where I'm coming from? I, I, you know, because I can already envision, I mean, we, we, we have had some pretty, um, some pretty high-profile cases come before the Civil Service Commission. I'm just imagining if the wrong attorney was the ALJ rendering the decision based on those high-profile cases, it would just, it would just further compound the, um, the, uh, the problem. So, I mean, what are your thoughts?
I, I, I see your concern, Senator, uh, you know, currently, we do bring on conflict attorneys because even sometimes our own legal counsel is conflicted out of certain cases. So we do bring in a conflict attorney. And we do ask the attorney, specifically, these are the cases you're gonna be handling, do you have any conflicts? So they sign a statement saying that they don't have a conflict. Uh, you know, uh, again, as, as, as Attorney Vanderbilt said, you know, there is a, a code of ethics. Uh, you have to remember too, the, the way we intended the law to be written is that the commission still ratifies the decision of the ALJ. And you have to remember, the employee or, or any of the parties that is not satisfied with the decision of the Civil Service Commission can appeal it with the Superior Court. So even the Civil Service Commission has to uphold certain standards. I mean, when, when they make a decision, it has to be based upon, uh, the burden of proof. And so therefore, uh, you know, we have to also take into consideration our reputation as, as an entity. So we take our, our business very seriously and I think the ALJ will fall into the same category because the commissioners will not ratify decision if they feel that the, the decision made by the ALJ did not meet certain criteria. But, but I understand where you're coming from.
Do you think, what do you think about maybe some, some language in here that would allow for the, um, the party to request, uh, or have a right of first refusal for ALJ adjudication? Like maybe if they're uncomfortable for the ALJ, ALJ, they could say, no, I just wanna bypass the ALJ and go straight to the Civil Service Commission?
Well, I, yeah, I, I think that the parties probably have, but, but I think, you know, you have two attorneys that are, are no, regular, uh, regular, uh, patrons of, of the Civil Service Commission and, and they would like to see their cases expedited in a much quicker manner. As, as Attorney Vanderbilt said, uh, it's a cost to not only the government of Guam, but to the employee. For an employee to retain an attorney, uh, for a year or two years, it costs a lot of money. And you're, if you're talking about an individual who's been terminated, they have no financial resources. Uh, and then if the employee prevails and the decision, uh, is made two years later, now the government of Guam has to pay back pay for two years. So that cost of paying the employee two years' pay, back pay, without even providing work to the government of Guam. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to expedite that process so that, uh, everyone, I mean, fi- on a financial, uh, basis, everyone pretty much will save money. But I think, I think the most important thing here, and one of the reasons why I came forward with this legislation or worked with the Vice Speaker, is that we really, I think if anything, we really need to take to heart, that we need to provide due process in a much quicker manner. And currently, the way the system is built up and the number of cases that we're currently handling, that is not being met. An employee should not be able to wait, have to wait one to two years before their case comes before the Civil Service Commission. Uh, you know, we need to move forward and expedite cases much quicker, uh, for both parties.
Yeah. May I respond to your two questions? Um, the, the suggestion that, uh, that the person not have any employment by the government of Guam, uh, I think is a, uh, reasonable suggestion if you want to eliminate, uh, the possibility of conflicts. And also, uh, the opportunity for someone to be able to object on a perempt, what we call a peremptory basis, when we're doing jury selection, where a party, if they feel that for some reason the ALJ who was selected cannot be fair, uh, could object and, and require that the commission have to assign somebody new on a one-peremptory type of challenge to, to that jurist. That will help to assure, uh, ultimate fairness. But I think that the, i- if I were going to word the language, I would say anyone who receives any income from the government of Guam, other than compensation as court-appointed counsel. Because court-appointed counsel are not hired out of favor, they're hired out of necessity. And, uh, there being court-appointed counsel isn't because of the fact that they are, uh, favored and they're, it, it has to do with the judiciary, not, uh, uh, the executive branch, which is the branch of the government most affected by this, uh, circumstance. So I think that your concerns are, uh, reasonable and that the lan- language like that, uh, might very well serve the benefit of the, uh, community being included in the bill. Thank you.
If not, thank you very much, and Bill. Um, if you wish to make any suggestions on the proposal, you're more than welcome to, all right? And if you want to add any amendments that you, as a result of Senator Sinekla's suggestion on this, um, we, we welcome that. The record will remain open for ten days to allow for that, all right?
Yes, thank you very much.
Enjoy the evening. Thank you. Let's go back to where we were supposed to start, and I apologize to Reverend Egan for... Uh, the executive appointment of Pastor Thomas L. Van Egan, Engan, to the Guam parole Board. I see, I thought I saw the chairman of the parole board here. And Pastor, please. Oh, there are others. All right. Why don't we start with, uh, the chairman? Get the two of them and we'll have you...
Good evening, Vice Speaker, Senators. Nice to be here, thank you for your time being here. Um, I'm here in support of Mr. Tom, Thomas Tom, Van Egan, he likes Tom. And, um, I'm really thankful that he stepped up. Um, he actually read an article in the paper a few months ago, uh, and saw the article saying that, uh, we were having some issues with the parole board, so, um, he, uh, actually found somebody to try to get ahold of me and try to figure out how he can apply coming on board, and so we just kind of helped him get that application through, and, uh, I'm really just thankful, uh, for him to do that. Um, he is pretty, uh, well, is sta- well, he's new on island about, um, a year and maybe a cou- about sixteen months, but, um, I think, um, he has a heart to serve. I think that his credentials show for himself, you'll see in his application, um, and, uh, he's worked with, uh, a similar situation, I believe, if I remember, remember his, uh, resume, um, and, uh, he's worked with restorative justice, and, uh, that's something that I know Senator Especho wanted the parole board to work, uh, he was not here, but, uh, he wanted us, the parole board, to work toward restorative justice issues, so I'm thankful that he's had dealings with that. Um, I, when I first met him, I guess I met him last summer, um, because of, uh, some other, uh, friends, and, um, he seemed like a really nice guy and just, uh, happy and glad to be on Guam, and, uh, and brought his wife, and, uh, uh, I just thought he seemed like an upstanding man when I first met him and just, um, in that instance, and, uh, and then here we are a few, uh, almost a year later, and he's, um, applying for, uh, a position to be on the parole board. So what little I know, I'm sure the two other gentlemen can attestify to a little bit more specifics, but, uh, uh, I, I just believe that he's an upstanding man, he seems to be a righteous man, and faith, of course, he's a pastor, so he's got those credentials behind him and a man of honesty and integrity. So I would really, uh, ask if you would, uh, humbly support and, and allow him to be a come of the Guam, a member of the Guam parole board. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Speaker and Senators. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Pastor Tom Van Egan and his appointment to the Guam parole board. He's been on island, as was said, about sixteen months, I've been here almost eighteen years, and I was just impressed that even after a short period of time on Guam, he was so interested in and concerned with where the parole board was at, that he took that step to be considered for the Guam parole board. He didn't just say, well, that's too bad, that everything's backed up and that's, something should be done, but he stepped forward personally to actually apply to be on the parole board. So I think that says something about him, just in the short time he's been on here, that he was that concerned. And I've been working at the Department of Corrections with inmates for a number of years with Bible study and working through prison fellowship. And again, within a short period of time after he got on island, he started to help me at DOC with the inmates that I work with. And very personable man, uh, the inmates really appreciate him and his attitude toward them and his background in restorative justice, I think, gives him an objective approach. He understands both the victim and the one who has committed the crime. He understands sort of both sides of the coin. So I think being on the parole board, he'll have that mindset of being fair as he reviews inmates that are up for parole and all the considerations, the victim's family, as well as the man who's up for parole. And he has a very varied background, besides being an ordained minister. He's served in the Minnesota Legislature and the states, he has social work background, restorative justice background, and as, uh, Michelle said, uh, just personally- restorative justice background, and as Michelle said, uh, just personally, uh, a very personable and, and a godly man, a man who considers and weighs, uh, the options when people are considering things that they've done and the prices they've had to pay for it. So I think he just brings a lot of tools, uh, to the table for the parole board, and I hope that he'll consider him positively and approve him for the parole board. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a day though, this afternoon, and good evening. Honorable Benjamin Cruz, Chairman of the Committee on, uh, Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, and all of the good senators who are here this evening. Uh, I am in support of Pastor Tom Van Engan to be confirmed as part of the Guam parole board for the following reasons. Pastor Tom has been the pastor of our church for the past year, but I already noticed that he's not only preaches good sermons, but he has other talents and experiences that will greatly help our community. Uh, first of all, I'm sorry, but I'll be reading, looking down a lot. So in this case, Guam parole board, since coming to Guam, Pastor Tom has spent some time teaching the Word of God and encourages inmates in, in his visits to, uh, the prison ministry. This will enable Pastor Tom to have a great knowledge about the life of inmates, their need, and their needs. This is a great asset to him when it comes to reviewing potential inmates who are quali- qualified for parole. Pastor Tom was a legislator in Minnesota, as was, uh, stated by Reverend Xavier, and has experience dealing with policymaking. I do not know too much about the task of a parole board member, but I believe that being a former senator will greatly enable Pastor Tom to be able to work closely with the legislature and the executive branch in proving the work of the board. Pastor Tom is a U.S. veteran, a former, former military man who was trained to protect our nation. He held the pilot's license. He can fly an airplane. He mentioned that. A parole board member who can shoot M-16. But fortunately, a pastor who cares about our spiritual lives and who can fly an airplane. Pastor Tom also has experience with restorative justice, as was stated, which to me is much more related to the work of the parole board. Many of the inmates are from the islands in Micronesia. I am from Micronesia. I've been on island for thirty-five years. And, uh, by the way, I'm an elder from our church and also work at Guam EPA, uh, as a pesticide enforcement program manager. So I, uh, I just want to add that he traveled to the island of Chuk, Ponbe, and Kusai. He had to know a lot of the folks who are out there and also was able to share information along with Mr. Bad Wolf, the idea of restorative justice to some members of the legislative, legislative, judicial, and exec- executive offices during his trip to the islands. As an individual, Pastor Tom is a great person to work with. He works very well with people of different ethnic and economic backgrounds. I believe he will work very well with the rest of the parole board, the community as well. He does not easily change his focus or his decision unless the change or changes are necessary, especially that are benefi- beneficial for those whom he serves. And as long as it is righteous and legal, I appreciate your attention.
Thank you very much, Alton. And now that you've heard your eulogy, you can speak.
Thank you, Chairman Vice Speaker Cruz. Senators, it's good to be here. I have to say personally that you've given me an interesting reminder of my days in the Minnesota Legislature and sitting through, um, a lot of details that some people aren't very interested in, but as you know, can be vitally important, uh, as we pass laws. So, uh, I sat there reminiscing. I served on the Judiciary Committee. I also served on Minnesota's Local Government Metropolitan Affairs. So we heard some of the kinds of things that your committee hears as well. Uh, I just, uh, thank my, uh, friends, uh, for their testimony. I should correct one thing. I was a state representative, not a senator. We had a two-house system and I was not in the Senate. I was in the House in Minnesota. Uh, also, I am a pilot, but I'm not current. So I can't fly in Guam until I, uh, uh, pay high prices and get recertified to, to fly. Uh, it's one of my hobbies that I love, but I'm not current right now. Uh, I only want, I don't know what more you want to hear. You have information in front of you. Uh, I have been interested in public service for a very long time. I've been interested in justice issues for a long time. Um, met, uh, a man I admire, Jim Skillen, who headed up, uh, the Association for Public Justice and now is, uh, the Director of the Center for Public Justice in Washington. Got to know him and began digging into, uh, issues of justice. Uh, worked with handicapped children and adults and then with chemical dependency counseling. I was the only social worker in a parole probation office, uh, doing chemical use assessments for several years. Um, because, uh, things changed. I even, uh, went to work in the private sector in sales and marketing for a while. And, uh, I noticed in there on my resume, it, it seemed like I'm bragging that I drove farm trucks before I went into active, uh, ministry. It was a great deal of fun driving eighteen-wheelers, I'll tell you, uh, and it's also fun to fly single-engine airplanes. But my point is, uh, I have been interested in public service and as my new friend, not so new, about a year, uh, Michelle has said, I read the paper and I, it kind of broke my heart to find out that the parole board does, can't get a quorum to hear the cases. Uh, as my friend Brother Jeff has said, uh, I have interest in helping out victims. In fact, our whole system needs to look more toward victims and then toward justice for offenders and community and, and families as well. So I, I, I find that very important. But on the list is if you have been sentenced to, say, five to eight years for a crime that you've been convicted of, and then comes five years, you know how the sys- system's supposed to work. You're supposed to have a parole hearing and the board can't meet? Uh, I didn't really physically cry out loud, but that kind of broke my heart that, that, uh, that happens. And that, that's not casting blame or aspersions on anyone. I, I know a couple of the reasons since with the vacant position, with some health problems of some of the other members. So, uh, as has been mentioned, I just felt very important to, to try to step up and see if I could help. So we'll, uh, certainly, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I didn't review all of my resume. It's there in front of you and, uh, I wrote it, so I don't need to talk about it anymore. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I certainly, I certainly would be glad to serve, uh, this island, my home, um, on the Guam parole board if it's your, so if you just decide.
Well, I think you can give us advice on how to be able to break this addiction to political life and...
Vice Speaker, uh, Mr. Chairman, I frequently tell people I'm a recovering politician.
Yes, I was going to say...
Let's talk about that later off the record.
Thank you. And, uh, we promised not to hold that against you, that you managed to escape the cult. Um, and I promised not to hold the fact, against you, the fact that you can u- shoot M-16 or whatever it was they said.
M-16.
M-, uh, expert in M-16 and hand grenades.
Don't tell me anymore, uh, 'cause I'm in favor of this confirmation, but not the gun.
That's thirty, thirty-five years ago, sir.
I want to thank you very much for being willing to, to serve not only this community in this capacity, but also the faith-based community. Uh, I was going to say that I hope that this position does preclude you from applying for the position of substance abuse counselor that they really need up there. Uh, but I'd almost rather have you take that position than take this parole board, 'cause they really need help with this, with their substance abuse addiction program up there and, and they don't have. It's been vacant for two years. I think it's been two years. Anyway, I, um, I'm, I saw your resume and I was very excited. And when Pat Wolf and Justice Merriman send a recommendation for you, I have no questions.
It, it was a great pleasure to meet, uh, Mr. Wolf and, uh, Judge Merriman.
I just have one question. You didn't indicate political party here on your, uh... Was that, was that Republican or Democrat in Minnesota?
I, I was a Republican. Uh, we were in the minority by a long shot. I was the fiftieth Republican in a House of Representatives of a hundred and thirty-four. So I didn't get my way very often, Senator.
It's okay. It's okay if you're a Republican.
I'm still, I'm recovering from that too, Senator.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and Tom, fellow Republican.
Oh, boy.
Well, you're stuck for four more years because, uh, I'm also a no-brainer just from hearing you speak and, and thanking you for stepping up to the plate. You know, I, I've talked to Michelle a lot on the campaign trail and, um, the prison is, I think, today the toughest industry that we have. It's facing lawsuits. Um, we're two-hundred-and-eighty percent overcrowded. And, and we're going to be backed up into a corner very soon. I think we already might be to forcing some of these guys, uh, to be released, some of these offenders to be released. I know California's mandated now to release twenty percent of their prison population. And so my question would be, when you look at an offender who has served his minimum time or her minimum time, what do you look for in someone that you should release back into the community? Because I've always said, and, and I've been a proponent of public safety, but I've always said when, when a prisoner gets re- released from the prison too early, he becomes the community and the community becomes the prisoner. And we're kind of facing that right now with our, uh, recidivism in crime. So I, what do you look for when, when you let this person back out into the community?
Senator McCready, uh, absent the Vice Speaker's trying to volunteer me for another job, I, I, uh, will honestly tell you that as a chemical use assessor, I spent some time as a chemical dependency counselor, but a lot more time as an assessor. And I often, uh, partly jokingly refer to myself as a human lie detector. I have been able to try to sort out what people who use and/or abuse or are dependent on chemicals and have to try to sort out the truth. So what I will really look for, I haven't served on a parole board before. This is a different part of the same sort of industry. But I will certainly look for integrity and honesty and somebody who has really learned or at least begun to learn their lesson, because sometimes it's too much to ask for that they've totally learned the lesson in, uh, let's say, a reasonably short jail time. But if they have learned their lesson and they have made some kind of commitment to improve and to change and, and to move in a better direction than the direction they were in, uh, I, I think that's what I will hope for in every case. And then, of course, we'll have to weigh out, um, not every person that comes to the parole board is saying all the right things and doing all the right things. So trying to set up a system to help them move in the right direction. If they have some honesty and integrity about trying, um, if they're willing to learn and willing to learn how to cha- make those changes, that's what I'll be looking for.
Well, I think you hit it right on the nose because ninety percent of our population in our prison systems is substance abuse. And, and crime, uh, while intoxicated, whether it's drugs or alcohol, is the main reason why they commit it. I, you know, I'm just wondering if we can go above and beyond our call of duty when we're talking about the parole board or a parole officer and find those pockets of people that deserve to be released or have learned their lesson and, and, and are still sitting in prison because of a lack of quorum. I mean, and I know it's been a while, but, but I think we can, and you've said it yourself, you go up to the prison. And so I think we need someone who will do that, go up, find these people, uh, release them back into our population because they've paid their debt to society and they are rehabilitated and they have learned their lesson and, and hope for the best. And, and then we can alleviate some of this overcrowding at, at our, our facility. But, but you have my full support and I thank you for stepping up to the plate, sir. Thank you.
Side note, Mr. Chairman, despite, uh, being of the opposing political affiliation, anyone who shoots expert with an M-16's got my vote.
For the record, I haven't touched one in over thirty-five years.
Uh, thank you, sir, for, um, taking the governor's call to step up to the plate and serve the community. And, you know, Senator Hagan said it right, you know, I mean, you go from carrying a, uh, a gun to carrying a cross and, uh, it just says a lot about an individual. You know, you, you've been there, you've done that. And, uh, you're, I was reading through your resume and looking, looking at your, your extensive background. And I believe that you will be a great asset to the community and not only the community, but also for the parole board and, uh, seeking that guidance and how to better the lives of, of the inmates that are in there. And when they do come to the parole board seeking parole, that, uh, you'll be able to guide them and say, you know, this is the quality of life that you need to move forward and live now. You know, and I think that, uh, from gun to cross, uh, would be able to assist you in that and, uh, be able to assist the, the inmates in making the right decisions and following a life that will be good not only for, for the community, but good for themselves and to lead that better quality of life for everyone. Thank you, sir, and you have my support. Thank you, sir.
Again, thank you very much for, as I put it, uh, stepping up to the plate and being willing to serve. Um, the parole board is probably the most difficult, I won't say thankless. It's just really, really difficult and I, I really laud everybody who's willing to do it 'cause it is so difficult. And, um, I'm so happy that we have another member that is willing to serve. So we'll get this confirmation out at the earliest possible date. And we'll consider the, uh, confirmation hearing on Pastor Tom Van Engan, um, as heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, Senators.
As long as we're talking about addiction, let's just move on to the... The next bill. Bill three eighty-four, an act to add a new chapter, a new section, twenty-six, six oh nine, to Article Six, Chapter Twenty-Six, Title Eleven of the Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Regulation and Taxation of Tobacco Products. I, I, as the, um, main sponsor, just wanted to, to give a little bit of background about the reason why I, uh, I did this. Um, as many of you know, earlier this year, we were able to pass an increase in the, in the chew, tobacco chew legislation. And after that was passed, I was approached by, uh, an individual in the community to, to tell me that there was a practice, and this individual actually even provided me with copies of invoices. Uh, there was a practice ongoing in the community where a wholesaler would sell ten cartons of cigarettes to a mom and pop store. The mom and pop store would pay the wholesaler for the ten cartons of cigarettes, but the wholesaler would also provide to the mom and pop store an additional six cartons of cigarettes for free. And I was really taken aback by that because part of the reason why we were increasing the tax and wanting to increase in the tax is to make sure that it became so expensive that I wouldn't get these. And this was actually from a store and I have the receipt for it, to buy one, get one free. And I, since introducing this, this legislation, have done my own survey, gone around to stores and I've noticed that they're selling packs of cigarettes or at least they're advertising in front, three eighty-five a pack. Um, so I am watching. People don't think that I look when I go into the gas station, but I look at the prices and I, and I, I can see them. I know that the snuff is now up to seven eighty-five or whatever it is. It's almost eight bucks. Um, so I know that's up, but I am appalled to find these things going on. And so I'm, I want the committee to understand that this draft legislation was sent out to members of the community about five months ago. And thanks to, uh, the Cancer Society, it was, um, and, uh, Dr. David, it was circulated to, um, numerous other, um, groups throughout the country. And, um, as a result, the, um, this legislation was, was proposed as being the way to try to address this issue. Um, I don't completely understand how, but I, but I take it on, on faith that going through the American Cancer Society, Hawaii, and a couple of other states, and going through the network of, um, uh, that Dr. David has, has reached out to, that this is one way of trying to close this loophole and hopefully, um, come to terms and address this issue of the, um, continued addiction of members of our community with this scourge. of the, um, continued addiction of members of our community with this scourge. Um, Dr. David knows that I stopped supporting President Obama when he refuses to, um, send to the Senate the convention for the, um, um, on tobacco control. And, uh, took that off my phone, it's no longer there. It's my protest. But, uh, uh, why don't we hear the testimony on the bill? We have, uh, Renata Bredalio, Dr. Renata V. Noel Rubio. And are you presenting or? Oh, for us, okay. Who else? Okay, who have? I just didn't get the names, I only have four names on this list, but whoever wants to come up is more than welcome to. Why don't we start with, uh, Renata, then we'll go to Dr. David since I've just tried to keep to this list. Is the red light on?
Yes. Uh, good evening, uh, senators, Vice Speaker Cruz and all the other senators. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak today. Um, I'm speaking as the current chairperson of the Guam, uh, Guam Comprehensive Cancer Control Coalition. It's hard for me to remember that G-C-C-C-C, okay, a long name. And I'll just go ahead and, if you don't mind, read the statement of the coalition. Um, dear senators, thank you for sponsoring Bill Three Eighty, Three Eighty-four, uh, dash thirty-two, an act to add a new, um, section to Article Six, Chapter Twenty-six of Title XI of the Guam Code Annotated Relative to Regulation and Taxation of Tobacco Products. The Guam Comprehensive Cancer Control Coalition supports Bill Three Eighty-four Thirty-two. We believe that eliminating multi-pack discounting schemes and other mechanisms that make tobacco products more affordable and create a tax loophole for businesses will help curtail negative health behaviors in our community, thus preventing new cases, new cases of cancer and other chronic diseases in the future. Cancer is the second leading cause of death in our island and has been a leading cause of death for many decades. Evidence clearly shows that the use of tobacco products can cause cancers of the lung and bronchus, head and neck, and other cancers. Therefore, by reducing tobacco use in our community, we can directly reduce the incidence of future cancer diagnoses and the associated financial and emotional burden of cancer on our families and the community. We continue to believe that policies focused on consumer behavior are very successful in limiting negative health behaviors and their outcomes. Communities across the globe have shown that raising taxes on tobacco is one of the fastest and most effective ways to, to reduce tobacco use of any kind. Unfortunately, in the past few years, businesses have been finding ways to circumvent or find loopholes to ensure that prices of tobacco stay competitive and affordable for the average consumer. By maintaining more affordable costs of tobacco, these businesses target the most, the most vulnerable populations in our community, the youth and the poor, who ultimately develop these negative behaviors which lead to poor health outcomes. The Behavioral Risk Factors Surveillance System in two thousand twelve indicated that twenty-five point eight percent of Guamanians were current smokers. Although this reflects a reduction of four point seven percent from two thousand eleven, it still is alarmingly high compared to the United States and DC, which has a rate of nineteen point six percent. In addition, Guamanians with less than fifteen thousand in annual income, who have less than a high school education, and who are thirty-four years old and younger, make up most of Guam's current smokers. You have it within your means to make the healthier consumer choice the easier one for our people. You have the power to make this community a much healthier place, leading to a cancer-free island. Please act now and pass Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two. And signed by Chuck Tanner, Chairman of the Policy and Advocacy Action Team Leader, myself, and, uh, the Vice Chair of the Comprehensive Cancer Coalition, um, uh, Mr. Ivy. It's, but it's from the whole Cancer Coalition, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. David.
Good evening, Senator BJ. Senators, uh, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. I'm presenting two testimonies tonight, the first on behalf of the American Cancer Society and the second on behalf of Health Partners. So I'll start with the ACS, um, testimony first. Vice Speaker Cruz and members of the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, or ACS, CAN, supports Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two, which places restrictions on certain tobacco promotional and discount marketing tactics. ACS CAN is the nation's leading cancer advocacy organization. It works with federal, state, and local government bodies to support evidence-based policy and legislative solutions designed to eliminate cancer as a major health problem. Tobacco companies appropriately face multiple restrictions on how they can promote their products, limiting their ability to reach consumers. Federal law prohibits advertising on television, radio, and the internet, and the master settlement agreement keeps tobacco ads off billboards and out of most magazines. Despite these restrictions, the tobacco industry has become aggressive towards marketing and promoting its products in other ways. Tobacco companies are keenly aware of the impact of price and spend eight billion dollars on marketing in the U.S. alone. According to the Federal Trade Commission, the largest single category of the eight billion dollars in marketing expenditure in two thousand nine and two thousand ten were price discounts, uh, in order to reduce the price of cigarettes to consumers. And that was eighty percent of the budget was for price discounts. Lowering pricing through discounts is an established way for the tobacco industry to keep their consumers and lure additional ones. As stated in the two thousand twelve Surgeon General's report, because there is strong evidence that as the price of tobacco products increases, tobacco use decreases, especially amongst young people, then any actions that mitigate the impact of increased price and thus reduce the purchase price of tobacco can increase initiation and level of use of tobacco products amongst young people. Tobacco discount and promotional activities act as an incentive for a person to purchase and use more tobacco products. We believe this is contrary to strong public policy to reduce the use of tobacco and thus save more lives from tobacco-related disease, illness, and death. We urge the committee to continue addressing the burden that tobacco has on our community by removing any incentives for increased tobacco use. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on this important matter. And this testimony comes to you from the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network to the Guam branch.
The second testimony I've prepared is on, on behalf of our team at Health Partners and, uh, and also testimony as a public health advocate and community member. Our team at Health Partners strongly supports Senator BJ Cruz's Bill Three Eighty-four, banning multi-pack discounts and other discount schemes that lower the price of tobacco products below retail levels. This bill closes a critical legal loophole that undermines the public health purpose of taxing tobacco products at an appropriate level. Price is likely the strongest determinant of tobacco use and we remain an island of addiction, of tobacco addiction. Despite significant declines in tobacco consumption over the past fifteen years, comparisons of tobacco use, uh, based on the Behavioral Risk Factors Surveillance System shows that Guam is still in the red, meaning we have one, we still have one of the highest levels of tobacco use when compared to the other U.S. states and territories. The World Bank and the World Health Organization unequivocally endorse taxing tobacco products at seventy percent of the retail price as a priority public health strategy. And it is a triple win. Tobacco taxation is a health win because it encourages users to quit, prevents youth from taking up tobacco use, and over time lowers the health burden from tobacco-related death and disease. It is a fiscal win because it generates usable revenue that can be used to augment health and welfare programs, and we're already seeing the impact of that today. It is also a political win because national and state polls in the U.S. consistently have found overwhelming public support for tobacco tax increases. And they also show that when it comes to balancing budgets, voters prefer raising tobacco taxes to other tax increases or to cutting important programs such as education and public safety. In Guam, our community outreach research at the University of Guam demonstrated compelling support from both youth and adult community members to further increase tobacco taxes and to use the tax revenues to fund tobacco control and cancer prevention programs. Local data delineates the powerful impact of sound tobacco control policy on youth and adult use. We have seen youth smoking rates drop from nearly one out of every two high school students in nineteen ninety-nine to what we see today, which is one in five students in two thousand thirteen. And yet, despite that, our rate of about twenty percent in youth is still way higher than the U.S. average, which is about, uh, fifteen percent. We clearly have a long way to go to reduce tobacco consumption and especially for youth, keeping the price of tobacco products high is essential. Uh, all the different coalitions we have here today have identified tobacco control as a priority. At our community summit, uh, that was held by the U fifty-four Cancer Research Grant at YOGI, community feedback called to increase taxes further on tobacco products to make sure that there is equity with smokeless tobacco products. And, and I quote, "to limit the extent of tobacco advertising, including at point-of-sale and prohibit the use of marketing strategies that target children and youth." The Guam Legislature, through the leadership of Senator BJ, listened and responded to the call for action by our community through, uh, Public Law Thirty-eighty to raise tobacco taxes and Public Law Thirty-two One Thirty-two to bring the tax rates on smokeless products at a level commensurate with cigarettes. But taxes are effective only if they are consistently applied and collected. One important legal strategy is to clo- close all the loopholes that result in opportunities for tax avoidance and tax evasion. Bill Three Eighty-four aims to do this by eliminating pricing discount schemes that result in lower tobacco prices. Thus, it is a critical public policy component to ensure progress towards a healthier future for our island. The bill is a triple win. A vote for the bill benefits all of our community members. A vote against it really benefits only the businesses that make a profit out of continued addiction to tobacco. Honorable senators, please vote for the people of Guam for our healthier future. So please support Bill Three Eighty-four. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. David. As long as we're talking about the future, let's hear from Mr. Princeton.
Good evening, Vice Speaker Cruz and members of the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs. And to everyone present here tonight, my name is Noel Rubio and I'm an incoming college freshman, as mentioned by the Vice Speaker. And, um, I'm also a member of the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids and I'm speaking in strong support of Vice Speaker's Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two, which is an important piece of legislation that blocks the tobacco industry from skirting existing tobacco taxes through the promotion of such things as multi-pack discounts. I'm greatly appreciative to Vice Speaker Cruz for this opportunity to testify at tonight's hearing as a representative of Guam's youth. Oftentimes, it feels as if the voices of local youth are overlooked by the larger community, sometimes even dismissed, and I'm truly honored to be able to share with you my perspective on an issue that critically affects today's youngest generations. This is as much a youth issue as it is an adult issue. Ultimately, Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two seeks to strengthen current regulatory policy regarding the sale and distribution of tobacco products on Guam. Although aggressive federal reform has greatly slashed the ability of tobacco companies to advertise their products through various forms of media and the recently raised local tobacco taxes mitigated tobacco use rates on island, the tobacco industry is still able to market its products in such a manner that it both evades the local tax and lures current and new tobacco users, particularly youth, making accessible an agent through which many lives are lost and many more are endangered. The deadly effects of tobacco are well-known and widely documented. A single cigarette contains over four thousand distinct chemical substances, some of which are found in household cleaners, car engines, road pavement, and pesticides. Many of these substances have been known to cause cancer and both smokers and non-smokers exposed to cigarette smoke or tobacco-contaminated clothing and surfaces have contracted multiple frequently fatal diseases as a direct result of tobacco products. Additionally, tobacco's high addictiveness makes it difficult for current users to quit. In my personal experience, I've seen my peers struggle with the rampant effects of tobacco addiction. Never did I have to look past my former high school's campus to see a classmate scramble to pay for lunch because he secretly spent his allowance on cigarettes or even worry about his already problematic lungs. And, and mind you, these are seventeen and eighteen-year-old kids. Quite often, I would smell the scent of cigarette smoke while walking through the parking lot of my campus or even catch a friend vaping in an empty classroom. And as alarming as these images may sound, they present a very real picture of modern-day youth culture. If left unchecked, these emerging habits may likely lead to drastically different, drastically shortened lifespans and crippling financial troubles for the young tobacco users of today. And I don't know about you, senators, but to me, an industry that makes a profit off the endangerment of human lives as an industry is an industry that must be stopped. Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two significantly quells the disturbing trends I described previously, all of which are caused by the tobacco industry's presence in our daily lives because the bill implements measures that have statistically been proven to globally reduce tobacco use, namely strengthening to the tobacco tax and reducing easy access to tobacco products. In other words, in order to put an end to the lethal tobacco epidemic plaguing our island, which although it's seen significant drops in tobacco use rates, still posts one of the highest figures for tobacco prevalence in the nation, we must increase taxes and reduce access. Increased tobacco taxes yield revenue used for the island's betterment, are publicly supported, and discourage users from continuing or beginning a deadly addiction. Reduced access also cuts off the incentive to continue or take up tobacco use and helps users wishing to quit their addiction, which is an overwhelming majority of smokers on island, follow through with their cessation plans. It is my firm belief that Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two, and other bills like it, put forth by brave and conscientious policymakers such as the Vice Speaker, will effectively terminate the vicious cycle of tobacco addiction affecting our community in its many manifestations. Cigarette smoking, chewing snuff, and more recently vaping, or the use of perfumed electronic nicotine delivery devices which continue to entice youth, are largely unregulated and have been proven to be even more addictive and almost as dangerous as cigarettes, and therefore secure for Guam the healthy future it deserves. I would like to thank you all for your time and for your consideration. I hope that my discussion with you tonight reveals that there are youth, just like me, passionately committed to the formation of a happier, healthier, more equitable, more just, and healthier society for all members of the legislature. It is for all these reasons that I humbly ask you to support Vice Speaker Cruz and his bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Noel.
Senator Cruz, my name is Eugene Santos. I'm a member of the Non-Comical Disease Tobacco Control Action Team and retired health education administrator from Public Health Services. Honorable senators of the thirty-second legislature, I'd like to thank for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two, which proposes to prohibit the sale of tobacco products through discounted multi-pack marketing schemes and to ultimately close another one of Guam's tobacco tax loopholes. I present this testimony in behalf of the Non-Comical Disease Tobacco Control Action Team to voice our full support of the bill, which will strengthen the efforts to protect our community from the devastating effects that tobacco use has on our friends and our loved ones. When companies are allowed to discount and create promotion activities, community is incentivized to purchase and use more tobacco products. These discounts and promotional packages are intended to keep tobacco users hooked and pose great risk to youth, women, and heavy smokers who are more likely to be lured by these marketing tactics. Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two is another example of public policy that will strengthen our efforts to reduce tobacco use and save lives from tobacco-related illness. The rise in use of smokeless tobacco among our youth, six point three percent in two thousand one to fourteen percent in two thousand eleven, makes it imperative that these loopholes will be closed to further protect our community. Guam's data shows that the market progress we have made against tobacco, according to data published in the Behavioral Risk Factors Surveillance System, we were successful in reducing the adult tobacco use rate from thirty point five percent in two thousand eleven to twenty-five point eight percent in two thousand and twelve. The strong public policy environment, as well as our community efforts to provide cessation and prevention, have contributed to this success. However, there is still much work to be done to reach the goal established by the NCD Consortium's Tobacco Protection Team, reducing tobacco use on Guam to eight per- eighteen percent by two thousand and eighteen. Passage of Bill Three Eighty-four Dash Thirty-two represents one more signed policy measure you can take to ensure that we reach this target and save lives from tobacco. We thank you for the opportunity to present testimony today and urge you and your colleagues to pass this legislation in pursuit of tobacco-free future for our island.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santos. Just like that, no retour, please.
Good evening, Vice Speaker, senators. Thank you for allowing...
Good evening, Vice Speaker, Senators. Thank you for allowing me to read Director Gillen's testimony. Dear Vice Speaker Cruz, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill three-eighty-four dash thirty-two. The Department of Public Health and Social Services supports Bill three-eighty-four thirty-two and its intent to bar multi-pack discounts and other methods of selling tobacco products to retailers at a reduced price. Tobacco use continues to be the leading cause of preventable death and disability in the world. The leading causes of death on Guam are heart disease, cancer, stroke, and diabetes. Tobacco use is either a direct effect on the onset or compounds the severity of these diseases. We lose one gumainian a day to tobacco use. Tobacco companies spend billions of dollars on strategies to ensure consumers become and stay addicted to their products. In two thousand eight, cigarette makers spent nearly ten billion to market their products. Much of the spending was used to pay for price cuts through coupons, sales, and giveaways. Promotion packs have been identified by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention as a strategy to tobacco companies use, that tobacco companies use to keep prices down. In two thousand twelve, US Surgeon General Regina M. Benjamin M.D. stated tobacco companies lower prices through coupons and other promotions so that consumers can afford to buy their products. Teens are especially sensitive to pricing. We find this true for adult smokers as well. The two thousand thirteen Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance System showed that thirty-four-point-two percent of current smokers have a household income of twenty-five or less on island. Fortunately, we have seen positive steps in the reduction of smoking on island from one in three adult smokers in two thousand eleven to one in four in two thousand thirteen. We just got the numbers for two thousand thirteen. The two thousand thirteen Youth Risk Behavior Survey also showed a decrease of students who smoke from twenty-one-point-nine percent in two thousand eleven to twenty-point-two percent, and those are high school students, and from thirteen-point-nine percent down to nine-point-three percent for middle-school students. This is due to the passage of policies aimed at reducing access, affordability, and acceptability of tobacco use. Bill three-eighty-four dash thirty-two has the capacity to further reduce health-related economic hardships on our most vulnerable families caused by tobacco use. I encourage all senators to support the life-saving passage of Bill three-eighty-four thirty-two. Signed, James W. Gillen, Director.
Please thank Mr. Gillen for the testimony provided. Thank you very much, and good luck at school, your man. The next bill on the agenda is Bill three-seventy-five, introduced by Senator Brandon McCready, and we'll allow him to make a short introductory statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and colleagues, members of the Guam Police Department. Over the past several months, I've heard from the many officers at GPD that the current Guam law is too stringent when it comes to hiring and promoting our officers to the management level at the Guam Police Department. To my knowledge, Guam Police Department is the only government agency where all the upper management-level positions requirements are codified under Guam law. Now, this has caused several issues with regards to hiring new individuals, and most especially upward mobility of police officers up the ranks at the department. The overall goal of Bill three-seventy-five is to untie GPD's hands in the hiring process and to ensure that the people of Guam get the most appropriate officers for their police force. I'm aware that our Post Commission is working on updating and standardizing job requirements across all agencies. So it is my intent that Bill three-seventy-five work with Post and GPD's efforts to update the job requirements, which we have done. And I will continue to work with GPD and Post Commissions and the committee to get a good bill passed that addresses the concerns of our department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. We have the chief and captain. Chief.
Good evening, Vice Speaker Cruz. Senators, thank you for allowing me to testify in support of Bill three-seventy-five dash thirty-two. I have written testimony that is being submitted in support of the bill. And as a member of the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, as Senator Brent McCready had indicated, we are in the process of developing leadership standards for classified positions within the law enforcement agencies who are determined as peace officers. And it is the, to my, you know, from some of the information that I researched, it is, this enabling legislation, Title Ten, Chapter Seventy-seven, it, it's, it has those standards for those four classified positions, lieutenant, captain, major, and colonel. And there's been informal discussions I had, and with the repeal of these positions, it allows the flexibility for the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission to work in coming up with standards, and I actually brought some attachments here of some of the work that I'm going to be presenting to the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission that I want to provide to the senators, because they, they, it gives an idea about some of what other police departments, law enforcement agencies are doing when it comes down to, to looking at what kind of qualifications or what kind of training or education is necessary for these positions, you know, on, and as I had spoken informally with Senator McCready, when we talk about a difference between entry-level positions versus management positions, certainly the complex problems that managers, lieutenants, police captains, majors, and the colonel, those classified positions are going to encounter, requires that we, that they have that ability to, and the, not only just the education, but training and experience to be able to not set them up for failure, to be successful in the job and carrying out their responsibilities. And when I say successful, sometimes it's subjective, because there are going to be different perspectives. I do anticipate that I've empowered, I've communicated to my command staff besides our position, the Guam Police Department position on this legislation, I anticipate there'll be other command staff or other police officers in the organization that might have a different perspective when they see this legislation. Some of them, and I can anticipate, might say, because some, sometimes some of this information circulates around, on my, do I support a college education, you know, for these executive positions, you know? And of course, I've always been a proponent, and I'm always encouraging my force, police, especially if you want to climb in your career, to invest in your education. But at the same time, I always want to be open-minded and flexible, that there are other, there are other programs, and these are just an example, if you look at some of these programs that they have, Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, that have been set up nationwide for different police forces, looking at not only lower entry-level positions, but management positions, and the different kind of programs. And one essential piece of this with the Peace Officer Standards Training Commission is looking at the University of Guam and Guam Community College to look at what some of these other universities or colleges are doing, so that we know, again, as I said, that when we hold an announcement for a police colonel, well, the police colonel's been filled, but police major, police captain, police lieutenant, that through the discussions, the Post Commission, and with, and everything has been decided with input from our agency, there's the opportunity for competitive, you know, competition for the positions, and at the same time, it just, it provides some flexibility for to get the best candidate, because we're being a little bit more broad in looking at some of these other programs that are altern, alternatives than just one regular academic standard of a four-year degree for these classified positions as colonel, major, and captain and lieutenant. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Captain Castro.
Good evening, Vice Speaker and Senators. I do support the entirety of the bill. I do agree with the chief's efforts to move us, move us towards passing this bill into public law. We do have a committee in the department that's really looking into minimum qualifications for our ranks from P.O. one up to colonel. So that committee can't move forward until this is repealed from Title Ten. And it'll give us an avenue to work with D.O.A., Post Commission, Civil Service Commission, to determine what our department feels is appropriate for our management standards in as far as elevating to a promotion. So this, this is an opportunity for us to, to make that step forward. Again, like Senator McCready says, we're the only agency or law enforcement agency that has this qualified by statute. All other law enforcement agencies do have unclassified positions indicated, but no management ranking, unlike GPD. So again, this, this avenue is so that we can, this opportunity is so we can have that avenue to make those changes. And it'll be an ownership of the department, so we determine what we need, as opposed to us being mandated to have certain qualifications. And the qualifications could change, they could remain the same, but at least we made that decision as a department collectively. And we will take in account Post Commission, again, D.O.A., and Civil Service Commission. So I'm hoping that this does pass, and we do, as a department, have that avenue to readdress what we feel is the most appropriate qualifications for our management to lead our department into the future. And just so you know, police work is very diverse nowadays. An officer can go to a bank and deal with a crime dealing with finances. And nowadays, now, it's information that the officer has to dissect. He can be given a spreadsheet from a certain bank, and he needs to dissect how does this work? So the degrees now, and as far as education, can be a little more broad, open to what now the dynamics of police work is. We do have cyber crimes, internet crimes, again, crimes that deal with accounting. So it's very diverse now, and what this will do is give us an opportunity to determine what best suits our department's needs in as far as moving up in the management position, and from P.O. one all the way up. So I do hope we do, you guys, you gentlemen, do move forward with this, and we do get this passed into law.
Thank you. I'm a little concerned. As I look at the bill, I don't see us repealing all these sections or amending them.
Repeal it so that we can now have the opportunity to readdress what minimum qualifications we feel appropriate for our agency now, as opposed to having it being a statute and that's a done deal.
I think because I didn't have the, the repeals that you, you guys are proposing today. So, so that would then take us back to repealing certain sections that we didn't do, which would be an amendment to the bill.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just, just structurally, I, first of all, in section three, we go through the effort of amending the language. So then in section four, we're saying we're going to repeal it. So we're going to need to fix that. Why even amend it if we're going to repeal it in section four?
Right, so I, I think the best course is to repeal it.
Yeah, so, so I'm just gonna, you know, so I'm just raising that as a point of concern as to why, why it was constructed this way. But probably my bigger concern is, I can understand that the minimum educational requirement, for example, on page four for a police major, is to have graduated with a bachelor's degree. And, and basically have that, you know, in lieu of a two years of experience, time and grade, is basically, he finishes a grad, a bachelor's degree, any bachelor, in, in any curriculum, that then, you know, he's, he's checked off on that requirement. But I do have concerns where we are making changes to the requirement. For example, with the police major, one of the requirements is that he would have graduated with a master's degree in anything, as opposed to right now it requires master's degree in either political, police science, criminal justice administration, public administration, or closely related field. And I guess just from my experiences, when we get into the graduate programs, it's really when you start specializing. In the bachelor's, you know, in the bachelor's program, you kind of major in something that will hold your interest for that four years, but it teaches you or mine to think systematically and all that. But, but when we're just going to open up the master's degree requirement to any curriculum, I have concerns with that. I recall at one time in the department, there was somebody who claimed that they satisfied the educational requirements because they got a doctorate in divinity or something like that. I'm not sure how that ties in with the police work, so, so that I would be concerned with. And, and I'm sure there was some benefit and value in that curriculum, you know, even if it was in fine arts or whatever. I just would think, though, that in the graduate program, we're looking at now starting to specialize.
And Senator, I agree with you. You know, I talked with the Senator informally about this generalization, you know, versus specialization. And when we get to college, we'll get to university, you know, we take the general, you know, general courses, general arts, liberal arts courses, but then we have to decide what you're going to major in. And, you know, some people, some of the officers, you know, have come up to me and asked me about my position on that. And I said, I know the Peace, the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, as a member of that too. The track we're taking is looking toward the, the individuals where they're at the lower entry have to complete a basic law enforcement training, has law enforcement courses. It's not computer courses, it's not electronic courses, it's not music. You know, you're not a music major taking. Could you get a music major that we bring in, you know, into the police department? Yes, but he starts out basic taking those law enforcement courses. And as they advance into their track, into the management track, we look at the, the way how the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission is looking at, it's, the, the track that we're taking now is looking at just exactly what I have here, Command Training Series, this, this, this document, that what a, what a police captain, a major deputy chief needs to be looking at, and these are reflective of leadership, labor, management relations, but they're all core into running a police department, not a, a business, you know, or not a engineering company, or not a, you know, music company. And I'm pushing in, in terms of in a department, a career advisor, a career planner, almost similar to the military, to have a position assigned in the department to advise these officers as they're preparing for promotion, that if you're, if you're competing against for a lieutenant position or a captain's position, and you have an associate's degree in electronics versus an individual with an associate's degree in criminal justice, most likely, we're going to choose the one with the criminal justice degree. So they have to start moving into looking at that as their major, because that's actually, I agree with you, that's the actual, the core kind of courses you need as you start moving up into the complex problems managers and police agencies are dealing with. They're not dealing with music problems, they're not dealing with architectural problems, they're dealing with policing-type problems and community-oriented policing problems.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, have you reviewed the testimony from the police commander?
Uh, no, he, actually, he was supposed, I, he just left, but he was going to present some testimony, but as I anticipate, there'll probably be a different perspective.
It is an incredibly different perspective, and I actually wanted to thank Colonel Siamah for presenting his testimony as well, because it, it raises some very, very key points that I just caught myself just thumbing when I was thumbing through the bill, and then it was pretty much validated by, by some of the statements he made here, and I wanted to kind of read them into the record. With respect to Colonel Siamah's testimony, on page one of his testimony, item two, he states, quote, "I do not agree with adding a third-level qualification option since there is a sufficient number of current GPD employees who qualify for the major's position." He's referencing page four of the bill, lines ten to fifteen, that states "successful completion of low less than one hundred twenty cottage credits." He makes it very clear in his testimony that he, he does not- He makes it very clear in his testimony that he, he, he does not support the change in this, that's being proposed here in this section. And he states further that "The third-level qualification option only gives the appearance of an attempt to lower the standards to enable those who do not possess the current minimum educational requirements that has already been established to ensure that the applicant can perform the job proficiently." Now, these are very powerful words, Chief, and, and so I, I wanted to ask, where's this coming from? I mean, it, I wouldn't, I, I don't think the Colonel would put this in writing if there wasn't some kind of, uh, uh, insinuation on his part that that was taking place.
Okay, uh, you know, I think I, speaking, if the Colonel was here, I mean, I'm, I'm just qualifying this as I'm speaking, if the Colonel was here, what I'm anticipating he would say. The department has had a history, as you said, one time there was someone who presented a degree in divinity, you know, and there've been a lot of times where they wanna try, what's equivalent to a four-year degree? There was one time in this legislative body, uh, the Peace Officer Standards Training Commission, they wanted to try and make the National FBI Academy equivalent to a jurisprudence degree in law, you know? And, um, so where the Colonel is coming from, I'm inti- I'm, I'm, I'm speculating, is when you have these ors in, 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 uh, in, you know, if you don't have a, a bachelor's degree, but you are saying or one hundred and twenty, where does the, uh, I'm anticipating the Colonel, uh, the, speculating the Colonel saying, "Why one twenty? What does that have to do?" You know, what it, what does that have to do? Because a bachelor's degree is absolute versus one hundred and twenty credits, th- does it mean one hundred and twenty credits? Because they say, uh, in four years, even if you don't have the degree, you may have, uh, had one hundred and twenty, you've counted up one hundred and twenty credits, and we use, we have in some of our entry level and some of our qualif- uh, qualifications, minimum qualifications, uh, credits earned the ac- earned in the academy, uh, um, count toward your promotion. But you see, some people graduate from the academy something like twenty years ago, you know, and that, and then after they graduate from the academy, they count those credits toward promotion to come up with that one hundred and twenty. So, I'm anticipating, that's probably what the Colonel's referring to when he asks, when he sees an or in there, you know?
Okay, so let's talk some more about what he's referring to.
Yeah.
'Cause I'm number three here, he states, "Although I understand the intent to repeal the police lieutenant and captain ranks from the law, I don't understand why this is not also the case for the position of major." And then he goes understate, quote, "I do hope that we, as we move forward to repeal these sections, that we don't arbitrarily leave the option open for self-serving individuals to lower the standards to benefit a select few. I recommend that a more stringent oversight process needs to be in place to prevent any manipulation by those with ill intent, because I believe the movement to lower the standards is the reason why we have arrived at this current discussion." Those are very, very clear statements that the reason this bill is being introduced as, uh, uh, as the perspective of the Colonel.
Yeah.
Is that there is an intent and a movement to lower the standards for a select few. Chief, can you please answer to that?
Um, I, I think my response is, as I said, that if you repeal these four classified positions, uh, and, uh, you allow the flexibility for the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, which composes all the different law enforcement directors, to discuss what they believe are minimum qualifications, and we have DOA representatives in the room, I don't think, I don't think, uh, uh, my perspective is, I don't think we can find a way where someone will try and lower standards, as I, I believe the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, just for an example, they wanna impose physical fitness standards, that's a new thing now. So, actually, uh, there, there might be a, there might be a, a little bit of change when it comes down to the, uh, 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 standards where, where, uh, for, um, not only, uh, the, um, um, management positions of Colonel, uh, Major, uh, Captain, and Lieutenant, there may be other things that might be imposed during the Post Commission, uh, um, Commission hearings, you know, and discussions of working on leadership standards or qualification standards, that might add something in testing or examinations that were nev- that were never, because if you ask me, what are the written examinations for Colonel positions or written examinations for, for a, uh, a major's position? Sometimes there's been, there has been, uh, inconsistency, sometimes for some openings for majors, uh, it's just an interview, uh, and without a written examination. Uh, for lower entry positions, uh, sometimes there've been some written examinations, sometimes no, uh, written examinations. I think the Peace Officer Standards Training Commission, as a member, uh, a lot of the, the, uh, things that we believe in, I think that's gonna go for, and we might, there might be, uh, some things that might be in there to say that it's not gonna be a walk-in-the-park to have a position of a police captain, police lieutenant, or police major. There, as I said, some of these kind of alternatives here are programmed that aren't walk-in-the-park, they deserve, you have to have some sort of aptitude to pass some of these, uh, senior management leadership position, uh, 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 training from the University, Northwestern University, if the university imposes something like that. So, um, uh, I can't speculate, uh, why the Colonel would say, uh, would this result if you repeal all of these four positions, that it's gonna lead to, uh, uh, someone trying to, uh, you know, favoritism, or someone trying to lower standards? Uh, I, I, I think we should trust the process that if you, uh, repeal these four classified positions and leave it at the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission to have our discussions, which is open to my staff and to anyone to come in there, and I always invite my staff to put input for the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. But as the captain said, allows some collaboration in terms of an input from the different staff or the different people who are gonna be attending Peace Officer Stand- Standards and Training Commission.
Who is, uh, who are the members of this Police Officers Standards and Training Commission?
Uh, they're, um, they're, um, the, under Title Seventeen, I myself is chief of police, but there's also the airport, uh, uh, chief of police, Bob Kamachi, who's the chairperson. Uh, you have, uh, Sinta Tomas from GCC, who's the executive director right now, and, you know, that individual has high standards himself, so it's, uh, former Colonel in the, in the Guam Army National Guard.
'Cause the, the, in the last portion here of Colonel Sayama's testimony, he referenced something that's very interesting that's really caught my attention, and he stays, he says, "Prior to all of this," meaning this bill, "between June fourteenth, twenty thirteen, and January tenth, twenty fourteen, a committee was formed to address the current minimum qualification, qualifications of all ranks within the Guam Police Department, all ranks." And I understand that there's some concern throughout the ranks. "The committee was made up of a representative of every rank, who painstakingly scrutinized each minimum qualification and made recommendations for the change, to GovGuam Department of Administration, Human Resource Division, and to you, Chief Fred Bernalio. The draft product, he states, is too large to print out, but will be emailed to our office for review." What, what is this that he's talking about?
Uh, that's what I brought up earlier, there, there is a committee in place within our department that's addressing each and, if, each rank and its qualifications. And for us to move forward with that to DOA, we need to repeal this from Title Ten. We can't do anything, I have the time to skew a statute.
Well, from what I would, I would gather, if, if that document is, is what wa- what is to be implemented, it would just need to, because I don't see anything here in the statute that prohibits that implementation. What I see are things here spelled out that probably might conflict with what you guys wanna implement, but I would, I would prefer to see this entire draft, rather than handling it piecemeal in, in, in an individual bill, because from my discussions of cer- with some police officers who've been, who've been communicating with me, they, they actually want some, um, some issues addressed throughout the ranks. You know, there's some individuals who are concerned about being in PO ones, twos, or threes for over ten years, you know, and then, and then there's concern about, "How do I move up to sergeant, or how do I move up to these, these next ranks above PO three?" And so, for me, I mean, especially in light of the Colonel's testimony, and as it relates to the specific bill, and also with what he's sharing, with what you're sharing, Captain, about the, the overall, um, rank adjustments that, you know, the minimum, minimum qualification adjustments.
If I can't, sir, there's, there's no agenda to promote somebody or a group of people. This is all done with integrity, and it, it's a transparent process. There's, there's no one here that's gonna benefit other than ourselves as a whole. Now, again, if it's on statute, it's by law, you have to follow those steps. But let me ask you, why is that, those steps not in the books for customs? Why is it not in the books for Port Authority? Or, um, airport police? Why is it just GPE? So, in all fairness, uh, we remove it, so we can have the same opportunity as them in adjusting their, their rank structure. Um, just repealing it gives us the, step one to move forward. I'm not here to discuss, or I don't want it to be an issue of someone having some agenda, or the chief having some, uh, concerns about, uh, doing this or that for certain people, because as his assistant, I'm all for integrity, and that will not occur with, with me and, and this chief here.
Yeah, and, and just, just to clarify for the record, the, the, this isn't me making the. No, I, I understand that, I'm reading into the record.
Right, right.
The testimony from the Colonel, and so, um, you know, just, just in light of all of this, all of these issues, I would like to, to look at the, the big picture.
Sure, sure.
And see what it is that, that you guys are trying to move forward, um, before I, before I get more comfortable with it, though. But I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for, for asking, uh, answering some of those tough questions. I guess some of the, the, the inquiries made earlier, uh, by our colleagues, or by one, one of our colleagues, is, is a, is a administrative issue, and I, I think, you know, we, we have to trust that the Guam Police Department and Chief Bernalio is doing his job. Uh, obviously, you and me and everyone up in this room is not gonna please everyone with everything they do, but we have to ensure or, or trust that you're doing your best to, to try and move this police department forward and protect this island. Uh, sir, uh, Castro, you've been a police officer for almost thirty years. How dare anyone question your integrity?
Right, right.
Your transparency, your commitment to protect the people of this island, and I think that would be an insult. Nobody has done it, but I'm just saying, thirty years of police experience, uh, I'm gonna take your opinion and, and your direction, and so I thank you for your service. You know, when we were doing the research for this bill, we looked at some of the top police departments in the country, some of the police departments that was, was, um, accredited by the, the CALEA, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement, and, and if you're, and, and with some of the stringent language that we have for the Guam Police Department, they would not qualify to get into some positions in the Guam Police Department if they were the number-one police officer in the country with twenty years experience. And so, 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 and if they came to Guam, they wouldn't be able to become a police officer because they don't qualify. So, when we did that, we, we thought to ourselves, you know, well, well, let's make it possible for some of these officers who've been in, in fifteen, twenty, thirty years to be able to move up, and when that first PO one gets into office, he can look up the chain of command and have a goal, and to say, "One day I can become a captain, a major, or a lieutenant." You know, we ask you guys to work tirelessly, lack of resources, overtime, and then, and then we're gonna ask you to do even more if you wanna become a twenty-year member of this police department. And so, I, I, I wanna make sure that, that, for the record, I'm absolutely for educated police officers, but I'm also for, uh, morale and momentum in letting these hard-working men and women in uniform be able to excel and to get promoted, rightfully so. So, I thank you guys for your, for your, uh, for your testimony, and I will, will take any type of amendments to this bill that will make this bill better, whether, uh, Senator St. Nicholas has his amendments, I know Senator Adams makes good amendments to, to maybe cross out the master's degree and leave a bachelor's degree, so whatever makes this bill better, I'm amendable to, to changing it. So, please, you know, I'll work with the committee and the, and the, Mr. Chairperson, and, and we'll get this thing passed, and hopefully passed, and, and let you guys do your work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it's, it's evident that there are some issues, um... That there are some issues, um, whether or not we do this before Post or after Post comes out with its recommendations, whether we do this with or without, um, a triple-A process to have the review of whatever it is your committee's putting out, those are issues that I think, um, we will, we, we will, uh, look at and address. But, uh, I am a little concerned that, uh, we're gonna be doing things, and Post is doing something, it would seem to me that we wait until Post comes up, and then we, we go and adopt the Post, uh, standards, uh, would probably be the best way, but, uh, we'll wait and see. Uh, we'll leave the record open. The, uh, appointment of, uh, Pastor Thomas Van Egan, the Bill Three Eighty-Four, Three Seventy-Five, and Three Eighty-Six, um, have now been heard. The committee will continue to accept any written testimony on these matters for the next ten days. Please provide testimonies to the Office of Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz, One Fifty-Five Hessler Place, Haguenya, Guam, nine six nine one oh. They may also be sent via fax to four seven seven twenty five twenty-two, or vi- via email to senator@senatorbjcruz.com. With that, uh, we'll adjourn this meeting at eight oh five. Thank you.